This is the third Tuesday in the month, Wapaka City Council meeting.
It's October 20th, 2015. It is 6:00 PM and I call this meeting to order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please rise and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes. So the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks Sandy. And would you take role also?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Kealan.
Here.
Scott Portchatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Jillian Peterson. And Eric Olson.
Here.
Now that you're present, we have a quorum.
Thanks Sandy. Consent agenda, these are all council items that we need to act on, but we do this with all with one vote unless there are some items that council would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda where we'll act on those as separate items. Sandy, you do have a couple of notes though here, right?
I do. Under number six consent agenda, letter A, monthly reports. Finance Director Treasurers' report for the month of September 2015 was emailed and also placed on the city website. And under number six consent agenda, letter C, approval of bills for the city general water, sewer, and special funds were also emailed and placed on the city website. And that's it.
Okay, and then, okay, anybody else?
Excuse me, was there a 6B that I missed? You talked about an A and a C. And I didn't know if there was something else that was supposed to be a B. At least that's what I thought I heard.
Well, A, monthly reports, and then C, approval of bills.
Oh, okay, alright, alright, I got it. Thank you.
Anybody else? We need a motion to approve then.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Kealan, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda with those two additions. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, under the regular agenda, there are no additional items. Unless council has anything that's different than what's printed, we again would need a motion to approve. Motion by Olson, second by Dave Peterson, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under announcements, we have a thank you note from the family of Lirana Nelson. The city, on behalf of the staff and the council, sent some flowers to Lirana Nelson. She was an employee at the rec department for 20 years, 20-plus years, so saddened by that. And so we have a thank you note in there from her family. And that's just informational, of course. Under public input, if we have anybody that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item. We don't have anybody in the audience, so it would have to be either staff or council that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item. If you'd like to do that, just give your name and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Any non-agenda items? Alright, let's move on to department announcements and reports. And Kathy, we'll start with you.
Thank you Mayor Smith. Good evening, council members. My report was emailed or picked up separately on Friday. And we're just going over the 2016 budget worksheets and reviewing accounts. Ellers and Associates will be meeting with Mayor Smith, Mr. Velicker, Brendan Kane, and myself to review their findings on the city's TIF tax increment districts analysis. And hopefully we'll be bringing that to council in the month of November. There is going to be some definite savings in refinancing some of the TIF debt. The changeover to the new employee health insurance carrier was completed and temporary cards were issued the day of the change. And regular ones were mailed out. We have not yet heard anything, comments from any of the employees, whether or not they've gotten any issues with using them. There's already been improvement process for the departments in using the purchasing card website for reporting. And the process improvement is in my office because I'm not getting all this paper and we're getting everything electronically so I can download it into an Excel spreadsheet and sort everything to be able to do allocation. It's much, much more efficient. Tina, Dennis, and I will be training the first two weeks in November on the new financial software upgrade, so I will not be at the next council meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you Kathy. Any questions or comments? I'm sure Henry will touch on this and I will too again, but it's important that we remember that next Wednesday, the 28th, at 5:30, we are having a special council meeting, which will be on the full discussion on the budget. And it is a council meeting too because we are going to request at that meeting, if you're prepared, to approve the utilities budgets that night. Not expected to pass the council budget, although you have every opportunity to do that if you'd like to. But I'm not sure of the numbers yet. I'm sure staff isn't prepared to say anymore on that either at this time. But again, make sure you have that on your agenda for next Wednesday at 5:30. In the council chambers too, it'll be right here. Okay, let's go to library. Peg.
Thank you Mayor Smith. Well, we still have our tablet time, which is an informal meeting of people who want to learn a little bit more about their tablet and downloading free audiobooks and ebooks to their tablet. And that's 10 o'clock every Thursday morning in the conference room. Our exhibit is currently The Artists of 54981. It will be through November 7th, so please stop by and see all of the talent that's here in our area. In addition to that, we have a new program coming October 29th. It's next Thursday night at 6 o'clock, and it's called Tales From Beyond. And we're gonna, the show features mysteries of Jack the Ripper, Lizzie Borden, the Titanic voodoo, and the Salem witch trials. So it promises to be a really interesting show. On November 7th, it's a Saturday, we're having a gingerbread maker space where people can come and make their own little gingerbread houses. And that'll be followed up by an exhibit, a gingerbread house exhibit, which will start in early December. We are trying out some new Saturday story times. Our evening story times didn't work for families, so we're seeing what we can do on the first Saturday of the month. You can come and hear library stories, and it's all for families. So every first Saturday, and then also story time on Thursday and Friday at 10:30 AM. We still have baby gardens on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10. And this week and next week, we are taking food in place of fines. So if you have a library fine, you can satisfy that fine with a donation for our area food pantries. And that is about it. Thank you Mayor Smith.
Thanks Peg. Any comments or questions for Peg? Alright, Brennan is on vacation and Henry's gonna take care of his information for us, so we'll just wait for that. Let's move on to Justin then.
Thank you Mayor. My packages, or my update is found in page 19 and 20 of the package. Starting with the wastewater division, we've made some headway on the mercury reduction program. We've had one dentist office install a amalgam separator. It was River Hill Dental. We have two more dentists to go yet, and hopefully we'll have them in by the end of the month or early November. We've made some headway on our flight pump project. Just a kind of little update is on the headworks part of it. We have getting rid of those big screws, which is at the very beginning of the plant, installing three small flight pumps, they're called. It's basically the manufacturer of them. Crew at the plant has done some excavation, getting some piping ready. And the pumps should be sent pretty soon. We should have them by the end of November. And basically it'll increase our efficiency and they'll run much better than those big old screws. The street department, we had sold at auction, three items. Our front end loader went for $36,500, which was much higher than anticipated. A number of the crew were making bets, and they were roughly around $28,000 to $32,000. So it exceeded everyone's expectations. The old airport car, which I understand was an old cop car at one time, and had no transmission in it. Well, it had one. That sold for over $1,000, which was higher than we were expecting as well. And the fountain, do you want to talk about the fountain, or should I?
Go ahead.
Alright, the fountain sold for $1,450 bucks. So again, higher than what everyone was expecting, so. On the street department side, the garage crew, or the street crew installed the new hoist within the garage. They're enjoying it. It works great. The back hole frame that needed a repair that I mentioned last month, that came in much lower than anticipated. That was only roughly $1,000. We're expecting it could be almost as much as $5,000. Moving on to the water utility. We did purchase the new Orion meters, which are the ones that use the cellphone technology, which will help save staff time by not traveling out to each meter. We bought enough just to go on the city's meters itself, just as a trial. So those should be installed by the end of the year. Again, on the water side, we started working on the safe water drinking loan, PERF, and ITA, which is an intent to apply. That should be completed by the end of the month, within the deadline. And should know by middle of January where we stand for our preference points. Working with the Bethany engineers, the construction, as you may have noticed, has started. We got a little looping project in the back there. Trying to get that hashed out and figure out who's responsible for what. We're making good headway on that. On the facility side, Russ was very happy to hang two plaques, 15-year appreciation plaques for Barb and Sandy. We posted the skilled crewman position last Thursday. We intend to interview in mid-November. And barring how the budgets work out, possibly higher in December. Sent in an application for the LRIP funding, which is through the County Local Road Improvement Fund, our program, excuse me. There's a meeting tomorrow at the County Highway Shop that I'll be attending. And we'll find out how much will be awarded. The leaf pickup season is underway, so get your leaves out, tell your neighbors, get them out there. And it is a fair rotating process, so if people complain that we're ignoring you, it just takes time to get around and get to everyone. And we have AT&amp;T recently contacted me. They're updating some fiber optic cable. They're installing a pretty good stretch on Evans Street, starting from Berlins Street and going all the way almost to Fleet Farm. So if you see a bunch of that work out there. But it sounds like it's a pretty good project that will help, I guess, extend their communications facilities and help hopefully facilitate more development out that direction. And finally, 2018 should be a pretty big construction year around here. As you all know, that's kind of what we're shooting for, for Main Street. Also, we're notified by the DOT that US Highway 10 is gonna have two large projects on Highway 10. Basically, they're gonna be median improvement projects. So the whole roadway itself should generally remain the same, but the median part should be improved with either a concrete barrier, beam guard, or some of that steel cable. Very early in its stages, but just kind of giving you guys a heads up. The County Highway E bridge, or the arch bridge on Berlin by Bethany, will also, is scheduled to be constructed at that time in 2018. And there's been some talks of possibly looking in to see if the DOT is interested in putting traffic signals at the base of the Highway 10 ramp at Fulton Street. So very preliminary, but just giving you guys a early heads up on that. Thank you.
Good. Any questions, comments for Justin? Thank you Justin. Aaron, Parks and Rec?
Thank you Mayor. My report is on page 6 of the packet. I'll just touch on a few things not included in the report. Justin's crews and Roger's crews are working on some things in the parking lot at the rec center. We have a kind of a water drainage issue. Maybe something that could have been curbed and gutted a long, long time ago, wasn't. And they're kind of pouring some asphalt there to kind of help get the water to go where we need it to go. It's gonna help with running the park where we just put in a limestone trail. We've had washout problems, and it's kind of gonna funnel that to the drain. So that, thank you for that, Justin. Andrew's been working hard on a Halloween party that's gonna be a week from this Friday, October 30th, 3 to 5 o'clock at the rec center. I'd encourage anyone to stop down, especially if you know any little kids that might be interested. We typically get anywhere from 200 to 400 people show up for that, so it's a really neat event. And the staff does a great job with it. They've also been doing a great job with flag football and volleyball. Another thing, we're gonna get you to Park and Rec thing yet, but if you want to do something on Sunday afternoon, I don't know what time the Packers play, but the Swan Bowl is quite the spectacle at Swan Park. So we try to make it fun for the kids, announce the game. So stop on out for that, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock.
This Sunday? That's a bye week.
Well, look at that. Perfect. I don't know how I didn't know that. See you out there then. And then I do want to touch on a couple of things, as I kind of noted before in some reports. We're in the part of a Swan Park planning process. As we're in the middle of this, we've gotten, we've received word that the boards are gonna be donating quite a bit of money to Swan Park, which is awesome. The boys have said that they will be spending up to $30,000 within the park. The girls, up to $10,000. And those are improvements that we are discussing within this process. Starting to do some of that work right away in the fall. The stuff that does have to do with the fields and the playability. We like to get that done before the snow falls because in the spring, it's hard to get out there and ensure enough time before we start games. So that's great, and a big thank you to them. We also got, from the Godfrey family, Tom Godfrey, River Ridge Trail donation of $5,000, which was a surprise. That's always nice to get those in the morning, in the mail run. So we're thinking that's gonna go towards a kind of a little boardwalk project by Brainerd's Bridge in a low spot on the trail that is kind of unpassable when we get some heavy rain. So I think it'd be nice to point to a specific project and say, that's what that went into. Also Fallarama, we were able to make about $4,200 bucks is what we profited. And that's a huge thanks to all the volunteers that helped, and a huge thanks to all of the local businesses and support we got from them through sponsorship dollars. So that was, was a great turnout, great day for that. Also want to thank a couple volunteer groups. We did have a couple Waigah School District classes come and remove some invasive species in the Grass Lake Trail, which was fantastic Japanese knotweed that we had been actually trying to do for a long time. But it's kind of, it was a lot of it, and we didn't have the manpower to do it. They were working with Golden Sands and got that taken care of two weeks ago. And then last week, they came back and removed some barberry out of the Oz property as well. And then we also want to thank Levi Ketchum, who organized a volunteer group and did a river cleanup from Rotary Riverview Park to Riverside Park. That's actually, it's noted on the River Ridge Trail system as a river trail. So we should technically have that cleared and open all the time. So we don't always have the manpower to get there when trees fall down. And they were able to go out and clear that for us, and that was, that was great. As well as pick up a bunch of garbage and things on the side of the river. And then I do also want to thank the police department. I think I've heard multiple, multiple times, and we've obviously noticed as far as maintenance goes, that Rotary Riverview Park seemed to be much better this year as far as vandalism. And I can only imagine that had a lot to do with the presence of you guys down there. So thank you very much. Paul, I'm sure you would agree. And that's about all I have.
Alright.
Much better.
Thanks Aaron. Any comments or questions for Aaron? Sergeant Helgason, what can you tell us going on here?
Good evening. I got a note here that the chief's report is attached to the council docket, and there's nothing really else to report.
Okay, thank you. Alright, let's move on then. Henry, you wanna?
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and give Brennan's report, and then I'll present mine. On the economic development front, the council saw the market analysis, RFP, before it was sent out, and that is out on the street. I have, while Brennan's been gone, I have fielded a couple of questions, a couple of calls on that already. We had pretty wide dissemination. I talked to Lindsay, who's our intern, and I believe they hit five or six states in the Midwest with this proposal. Brennan's a member of the American Public, or American Planning Association. And they have a website, and they allow distribution of these kind of things. And it was at no cost to do that. So we've got a very wide breadth that we've had. We had our second Summer Nights event on September 30th. We had about 50 people attending the tailgate downtown, and about 100 people at the bonfire. We did have a wrap-up meeting. Our intent is to build on the two events, but also pull together a third event. So if you have any great ideas, and something pops into your head of a theme or something around a third event, you know, we'd love to hear any input. Brennan is a chamber ambassador, and the month of October is Operation Thank You. So the ambassadors are going around to all the businesses and that are members of the chamber and thanking them for their membership. And then Kathy and Brennan attended a mandatory two-day training on CDBG administration. I heard it was a little brutal, but we do what we do to, you know, have to, to access these funds. So it's important that we know how to manage these grants and get the training. But it was hard having both you guys out for two days. It was, it was tough to have you here, but that's completed. As far as projects, Bethany Home, as you probably read in the paper, broke ground on October 4th. Construction is anticipated to take about 20 months. The Plan Commission approved a 9,600 square foot addition to Marvin Metals. They want to go ahead and proceed with the footings and foundation. And they'll try to get that in yet this year with the shell of the building going up. They want to be completed by the first quarter of next year. And the microbrewery finally, that is slated for Main Street, is delayed once again. There has been a notice of some more grant dollars available with the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. And they want to see about accessing some funds for construction for that project. So they were going to start in November, but with the grant deadlines, they're gonna wait to see how that all works out. And they should know in January how their grant stands. And then finally, they're working on Brennan's office on zoning code and design standards updates. The Main Street RFP is also out on the street. And we expect to get some good interest in that. The parking study, you've approved that, and it's underway. Next week, the consulting firm, Sam Schwartz, will be in town to do their second count. And they will be holding a open meeting at, I believe, 5:30 to 8:00, Tuesday, October 27th, at Farmer State Bank. So if you're interested in kind of getting a glimpse of what the first kind of broad brush sweep is of the parking in our downtown, they'll be there to give a presentation. They also want to meet with a couple stakeholder holders one-on-one, so we're hooking those meetings together. Code enforcement, you authorized the advertising of this position. It's a part-time position. Candidates will be interviewed later this, later this month. And also Brennan and Josh Werner are demoing some code enforcement software packages that they think can really help create some efficiencies in that function. Right now, we have basically an Excel spreadsheet. It's a very convoluted way of kind of keeping track of written notices and those kind of things. So we hope to improve that. Any questions on Brennan's report? Sure.
I have one question. How are the new events funded? You know, in this budget time, and we're bringing new events into the city, how are these being funded?
Well, the, the second event really had no money attached to it other than some staff time calling around, trying to coordinate the folks. The first event, we got sponsorships for the nine holes. And we are putting together and accounting of that. But it worked out in the end to meet the budgets. The chamber's gonna probably come up with about 500 cash, and Brennan and I found the other 500 in our budgets to pull that event off. Now, that doesn't include any kind of staff time that went to planning that event. That would've been Brennan and myself mainly. Lindsay, our intern, helped set up and did some of the construction. And then of course, a couple of our public works crew. So there was some staff time with that. But we had volunteers breaking down the event and that kind of thing. But for the Sputter Open, we did come up with some cash out of the city and found that through our budgets, between the two of us.
One question for you too, Henry, about downtown businesses. Microbrewery, okay? What happened to the move from the Drakes down to the old office supply thing? See, that's.
Yeah, that, they did not get, if you remember, we asked you permission to submit that request, because we have to be the grantee on behalf of the Lucky Tree people. And they were not funded on that application. So I think what the brewery wants to do is do the same kind of thing. Have the city apply on their behalf. And they've got to show some financial hardship and ability, you know, that they need the help. And I guess Lucky Tree didn't, you know, make the bar on that. So I haven't talked specifically with Brennan, but because we're the grantee, we'll, we'll need to come before you at some point in the near future to get permission to apply for that. In terms of my report, the job description studies in the last stages, and in my monthly report, I did suggest, hopefully it'll be okay, just because I know you guys don't want to review 50 job descriptions. But what my plan was, was to bring forward the department heads, myself, our job descriptions for your review. Because you, as a council, you know, hire and fire department heads and have authority over that. So we thought it would be appropriate for you to review those job descriptions. And then allow myself and the department heads to finalize all the other job descriptions that we have, just to, you know, facilitate, you know, getting all the approvals. And then finally, the budget, of course, been working with Kathy on that. We take your charge very seriously that you gave us last week. We're 200,000 out of balance. Because of schedules, the earliest I could get the department heads together is next Monday, the 26th. So my plan is, is we will meet and then try to get to something together on Tuesday. Try to shoot you some summary of where we're at. We threw a lot of paper at you last week. It's not our intent to do this next time. Please remember to bring your papers with you to the meeting. But we'll get something out on Tuesday to sort of set the table for you when we talk on Wednesday. So again, when the packet goes out next week, there won't be a lot in it. Just know that we're 200,000 out, and we're working as a staff to. Just know that we're $200,000 out, and we're working as a staff to, you know, bring you, close that gap for you, or some suggestions on how to do that. I think there'll be some discussion and some decisions on your part on how you wanna ultimately close that gap, so. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Henry. Any questions of Henry for his reporter Brennan's? Okay, let's move on, then, to the meat of the meeting for tonight. We have under new business, we have license report number 1292. This is an operator's license. You can find this on page 79 of your packet. Again, this is contingent upon approval by city staff. But we would be looking for a motion to approve of license report number 1292.
Well, it's not a lot of meat to approve. I'll move to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut, that we approve license report number 1292. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Nothing under unfinished business, communications recommendations of the mayor. Again, I think it's important that we, we understand that, it's very important that council members attend next Wednesday's meeting at 5:30. It is a budget meeting, and we, this is our second meeting that we've had together with staff, so hopefully you can attend that. I don't remember, Henry, did you also state on the 27th, or Eric, on the 27th, there's a downtown?
Yeah.
Parking study, the consultant's gonna be, we meet at Farmer State Bank.
And that's at 5:30 also?
Yeah, 5:30. Yeah.
Monday is your Board of Appeals meeting, right? Okay. Yeah. Okay. Alright, so, and again, if anybody would like to attend that meeting on the 27th, of course, at Farmer State Bank, that is open to the public, and I'm sure that the public would appreciate council members attending that, so get the opportunity, try and attend that. Anything else for the good of the meeting? Are we need a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Keel, and second by Hack, that we adjourn our regular scheduled city council meetings. Any discuss, oh, I'm sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, we're adjourned at 6:33 p.m. Thank you, everybody, for attending, watching, have a great night.